Down Burlington to order. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance. By the United States of America. This republic should stand one nation, God, indivisible, liberty, justice, law. Thank you. Okay, let's um. Go through a couple of meeting protocols so we're all on the on the same page here. This is something we've done before, but we do have a few new members, so um. Let's go through the the steps. In order to speak, uh, you're going to raise your hand uh via WebEx. Hit the button, uh, and I will be able to see in the participant list who has raised their hand. Um. Once you are recognized, you can then unmute yourself, uh, get a chance to speak, ask your questions. And then when you're through, uh, please mute yourself and lower your hand. Can do that. Uh, when it comes to voting, the town clerk will be will send out a poll. You'll have a choice as to uh how to vote, yes, no, or abstain. Uh, please do so promptly, and then I believe you have to hit submit in order to to get counted, so. Town clerk will will tally those. Um, we have three breakout rooms. I will get the the vote total from those three, we'll add them up, and then I'll announce the the result. Um. Of the vote. If you have protocol questions, you need to get get through to me. Uh, you can use the the WebEx chat function, and someone will be monitoring it. And for those who are watching via Bcat. I believe there's a a posted phone number should you have questions or um that you wish to call in, and someone will be uh monitoring access through Bcat should there be should you have a question. We have. Housekeeping motions and um. So Amy, could you have a a poll for just house just housekeeping questions, call it? Well, I'll tell them what they are, and they just need to be able to vote. Okay, these are. Familiar ones. Um, I'm gonna wrap them all all together into one motion. So the moderator would consider a motion. That we conduct this town meeting virtually on the WebEx platform utilizing its polling functions to vote. That. Bruce Morin, David Waddilla, Dan Raski, and Roger Bell will serve as deputy moderators. And should we not conclude our business tonight? We will adjourn till 7:30 on Wednesday, September 29. Do I have a motion? Someone unmute themselves.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All right, Amy, if you could send that out. All right, the motion should have gone out. All right, breakout rooms, I need I need votes from you. Uh, music theory room?
Uh, yes, music theory room, Mr. Moderator, four in favor, one abstain, one against.
Okay, um. Chorus room?
Chorus room, three, four, none against.
And science lecture room?
Uh, four in favor, none against.
All right, Amy, those votes were. Four, one, one. Three, zero, one, with zero, zero. Okay, there being eighty-five in favor, one opposed, two abstentions. The motion carries. Wonderful, thank you. Now see if we can get on to our uh our business. Actually, before I do that, let me uh. Thank a few people for helping us out tonight. Uh, Paul Fowler, Aiden Khalifa, Dylan Agawala, Joe Machado, and Kiper McKinnick. Thank you for your help tonight in in helping this this meeting progress. All right, uh, Article One. Courts of town officers and committees, we have one report from the. Historical commission. So Mr. Coppola, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, with me tonight, Chairman Joyce Fay, members Mary Nolte, Kathy Horton, and the Attorney Mcormick. Uh, the town, the selectmen will soon be announced in the uh important creation of a vice uh semi-synchronous sequential commission, which is the country's 250th anniversary. And uh in preparation for that, the historical commission has been doing a number of activities around town and developing a list that you received from uh the town clerk describing all of the tasks that we uh feel need to be done in in preparation for the 250th. And we would also like to accomplish some of those activities uh within the next couple of years when the town will be celebrating its 225th anniversary. So we're here tonight just soliciting uh your support for future warrants and also maybe participation in helping us get these uh activities accomplished. And that's it.
John, I've lost my screen. So, all right. Any comments or questions on on that report? There being no hands raised. It's moved on to. Article Two. Has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee. To see if the town will vote to set the annual town election for April 9, 2022. Any questions on that? Comments, discussion? In that case, do we have a poll for? Mr. Stacci, do you have a question for us?
Um, I'm, Mr. Moderator, I'm not getting the polling.
On its way now.
Thank you.
Okay, breakout rooms, I need some some votes. Uh, music theory room?
Uh, music theory, Mr. Moderator, six in favor, zero abstain, zero opposed.
Thank you. Chorus room?
Chorus room is three, four, and none against.
Science lecture room?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, five in favor and none against.
There being. Eighty-six in favor, one opposed, and seven abstentions. Our town election date is set. Article Three. Is moved. Is as printed in the warrant, it has been moved and seconded by the the Ways and Means Committee. To see if the town will vote to accept from the trustees under the will of Marshall Simons an amount of $65,656.54. Ways and Means, do you have a recommendation on accepting money? Just more.
Yes, uh, the committee voted nine and zero in favor of accepting money. The committee generally approves the collection of money to the town.
Thank you. Uh, recreation commission, have comments you'd like to make on this?
I don't know if there's any members of the commission, but I don't have any other comments.
Okay. In that case, we'll put it to a vote. All should be on the way. And I've had a question as to how many people are voting are here. We have eighty-six people online and fourteen people in the breakout rooms. You got thirty seconds to vote, so please don't dawdle. Okay, breakout rooms. Can I get your votes? Uh, music theory room?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, we are six in favor, zero opposed, zero abstain.
Chorus room?
Three, four, and zero against.
And science lecture room?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, five in favor, zero against.
There being eighty-nine in favor and zero opposed. I think we'll accept the money. Okay. What the shuffling papers here, let's move on to Article Four. Been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee to amend the fiscal year 2022 operating budget. Is hereby requested to see if the town will vote to amend Article Three of the May 2021 Annual Town Meeting. Fund 20, Fund FY 2022 Operating Budget. By adjusting the amount appropriated in various lines by an amount totaling $500,000. Selectmen, line five, $65,000. Accounting, line eight, $30,000. Assessor, line 10, $30,000. Building, line 49, $20,000. Schools, line 55, $250,000. Board of Health, line 60, $30,000. Council on Aging, line 65, $15,000. Oh, $25,000, I'm skipping a line. Youth and Family Services, line 71, $15,000. Library, line 73, $25,000. Recreation, line 76, $10,000, a total of $500,000. Doesn't not hear you, Tim.
Yeah, I know what you mean, dude.
Oh, man. Not showing. Not a chat, it's, I don't look at chat. Mr. Martin, you have your hand raised. You're muted.
I'm now unmuted. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Point of order, I had a question uh for Mr. Sanchez on Article One. You aren't, you you haven't, and you went right by Article One uh without recognizing me. Uh, so apparently you aren't seeing hand raises, so this may be a problem for later. I would like, I would like the opportunity when we start talking to ask Mr. Sanchez something about that may be unrelated to the article, the fifteen million dollar article, later on. Instead of trying to going backwards and stuff. Okay?
Mr. Martin, if it's not related to the article that's on the warrant.
I know, Mr. I know, I said it was a point of order. Now, for my question on this article, I need to have each of the departments that they are giving money that we're getting money for, to please get up and and tell us exactly what the uh monies are for and why they're needed uh so that we don't have to spend uh hours reading all the stuff that's that may have been available. Thank you.
We'll be getting to that, thank you. Mr. Moran, report from the Ways and Means Committee, please.
The committee voted eleven, zero in favor of this article. This is taking money that uh is replacing uh this money is taking, this article is taking money that was appropriated from the ARPA Act and is uh replacing the um lost revenues that we had as a result of the COVID pandemic and is supplementing the the budget in that respect.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. Mr. Denizio, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, the the purpose of Article Four, as you described in the motion, as Mr. Moran just uh spoke to, was to increase operating budgets for a few departments. And this is really to replace some budget decreases that came last at last September's town meeting when we cut 2.1 million dollars from the operating budget. Uh, you may remember that we cut 350,000 from the town side operating budget, 350,000 from the schools operating budget, and another amount from of of 1.4 million from accommodated accounts. This is to restore some of those cuts for the departments that you had listed. Uh, in the the source of the funding, uh, as Mr. Moran just pointed out, is the American Rescue Plan Act or OPERA, as it's uh formally referred to. Um, in this OPERA funding, as it says, I won't read the uh memo from the backup, but uh as it outlines, there's two sources of funding that come with this. OPERA money, there's a direct municipal funding source that uh for the town is just under $3 million. Uh, and then because the Northeast doesn't operate like most of the of the country with the county system, there's a county allocation that goes to Middlesex County, and they as a act as a pass-through and forward that on to the town also, and that's about 5.5 million dollars, for a total of 8.5 million dollars. Um, that's just after this article. What this article does is adds money back into the operating budgets. And the reason where we're here is because we're adding both to the expense side and the revenue side because this is going to be budget neutral, 500,000 of expenses being added uh to replace positions or hours or overtime that was cut from operating budgets last fall uh to restore those and also cover that with revenue from this OPERA grant. So the grant is for 8.5 million in total, as we just talked about. Uh, the plan would be to use this $500,000 uh to earmark 1.5 million to be able to use it for three years. It would give us a chance to be able to wean ourselves off of these revenues uh while our local receipts budget starts to increase as we start to get that. Uh, we cut that line by 2.1 million last September. This gives us some time for that line to grow uh over the next three years and use these revenues to offset it so we can uh cover them within a budget and doesn't create a structural deficit. Uh, some of the uh specifically for Article Four, there are ten departments that are having their um lines increased for a total of $500,000. Happy to answer any questions about each line specifically, what they have to do with uh but budgets that were cut or positions that were left open, uh vacant positions that were left open or retirements that weren't backfilled last fall when we had to make uh uh the big budget cuts last September.
Thank you, Mr. Denizio. Mr. Warren, you have a question?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Very quick question. I just want to make sure I understand. Um, through you to Mr. Denizio, of the 8.5 million, from what I can understand so far, 1.5 is going to be allocated 500K each year for expenditures for the budget. And then the other uh 6.5 or 7 million, is that for revenue um relief? Or is that partially going into the stabilization fund? I think I'm just not clear on what's going on with the bulk of that money. Thank you.
Mr. Denizio, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, to give a higher level of view of what the total 8.5 million is expected to be used for, as of right now, we earmarked that that uh 500,000 or the 1.5 million for the three years for the revenue replacement piece. We've also spent 500,000 in the design work for the mill pond addition for P-Pass filtration. And uh first and foremost, we want to earmark some money to to uh cover any expenses that come with COVID uh or the continued uh COVID costs that we're experiencing now, uh either, you know, whatever they whatever they may be, we're earmarking some money for that. So we expect that total to be, we've committed the the 1.5 million and the 500,000, that's 2 million. We expect to earmark about another million, uh that's 3 million, and the 8.5 million total, so the other 5.5 million um would be, could be used for things like uh water and sewer infrastructure, as we have two warrant articles that we'll talk about next, uh that total almost 20 million dollars. Uh, they could be used for something like that, or the benefit of this uh op, this newest uh funding source, OPERA, is that it's uh more flexible on what you can use it for, and it's an extended spending period. So we don't have to spend this this year. We're in no rush. We have time uh to be thoughtful, to do things like uh earmarking some for revenue replacement in a in a strategic way so we don't build a structural deficit in our in our budget and so we don't have to act right away. Uh, we'll, we'll do some uh short-term borrowing for those newer projects that will get us through a few years. And if at that time, we still had a big chunk of that 5.5 million, well, then that would be 5.5 million less we would have to borrow, uh keep that out of the operating budget. Or if something else came up in that time, we would spend it for that. So a long-winded answer to your short question of what are we going to do with the 8.5 is that we've earmarked about 3 million, and the other 5.5 is, we don't have to decide yet.
Thank you.
Mr. Boyden?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Boyden, Precinct One. Uh. Through you to Mr. Denizio. Um, I'm looking at the list of authorized areas in which these uh these funds can be spent, and one of them is to provide premium pay for essential workers. Would it be allowable under this to give some kind of a pay increase or a bonus to teachers or daycare workers who have, you know, carried the town through some really serious difficult times?
Uh, that would be an allowable cost, correct?
Well, I would, I would. Well, I would, I would certainly recommend that as something that could be considered for this type of money. Thank you.
Lance.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Nolan Lance, Precinct One. My question is, or I guess, okay, two questions, I'm sorry, a question and a comment. The question is, I'd like to hear more detail about the budgets that this is going into, what they had cut and what this is going to replenish or replace. And my comment is, I'd rather see us not save so much of this money for, to offset the borrowing that we might need for infrastructure, but rather to use the money. We made significant cuts last budget cycle. Basically, this is a brand-new miniature budget cycle that we're doing right now. We've got eight-and-a-half million dollars that we could replenish all in the budget. We could put all of it just for future or some combination, a proposed combination. I would like to see more replenishments because we made cuts, because we had a revenue shortfall because of the COVID impact that happened immediately. And I think we should be using it more to offset that as opposed to save it for a rainy day, because if you haven't looked, it's been raining. And we should be using rainy day money when it's raining, not saving it for future rain. That's my, that's my opinion. So, but I would like to hear more detail about what the cuts were that this is replenishing and perhaps what cuts this is not replenishing that are still remaining from last spring.
Thank you, Mr. Lance. Mr. Denizio, can you handle that, please?
I think so. I'll, I'll try my best. Just a, a comment, a clarification, and then I'll try to answer those, those questions. The comment is that we will certainly be trying to plan strategically with the Ways and Means and, and all of the boards as we produce our FY twenty-three budget, which we do expect to continue to have revenue issues with. We will continue to analyze this and how much that, if, if any, that we thought we should be able to, to be coming back to looking for there. With the revenue replacement piece, one just clarification, there is a limitation. We couldn't just use the whole eight-point-five million on revenue replacement. There's a calculation that we have to do for, for the auditors each year on how much the revenue has rebounded over the time since COVID started. So that's just a clarification. We don't need to get into the weeds on that. And it's fun, I believe the last question was just a little bit more on each of the positions that are adding back with, I don't know if you want me to go each one specifically or, or more general. I can say that in, in general that they are hours. For example, at the library, the library had closed some of their weekend hours. So we had cut their overtime budget, so that resulted in some week, less hours that they were open. Those could be restored for recreation. It was programs that, that weren't going to have the enrollment, given the pandemic. But now we want to go back to a full complement of our programs offered. For the youth and family services, there were some FTE shifts with some changes in positions and retirement. Their budget, their budget was cut, so that was necessary to reduce some FTEs. We would be able to restore that. Council on Aging, some, some hours for some part-time positions, part-time van driver, part-time receptionist hours that could be restored back to pre, pre-COVID as, as they get more operations going over there. For Board of Health, there was a part-time position that was reduced. This would allow us to restore that and also right-size the overtime budget, given that there's still lots of contact tracing and things like that that need to be done. For the Building Department, it's, it's hours for coverage, or we had eliminate from the budget for covering vacations. We do have two retirements coming up in that office that will have some, some retirement buyouts of vacation time and things like that, which usually you have to wait to hire a replacement because you have to cover those costs. This will help with that. Assessor's office is the hiring a new assessor. We had decreased the budget last year when we were going to contract with an assessor. We, we've advertised for an assessor, so we need to add that back to the salary line there. In the Accounting Office, there's a part-time position that was vacated from a retirement that was less, left vacant, which is, is much needed due to the added requirements for auditing for these grants, the COVID-related funding grants, not to mention the regular operations of the office. In Selectmen, this one is a little bit more tricky because the add-back is actually a position that was in the Treasurer's Office, a position that was left vacant that is now, we're looking to add back, but to transfer the person to the Selectmen's Office to be able to help with things that are new to that office that they hadn't had to help support before. This is a support position. This would be for things like economic development, small cell, things that we just didn't have before. And then in the School Department, that hasn't been decided yet. This doesn't restore the whole three-fifty that was cut last year, but it does, it gets part of the way there. So I hope I answered all the questions.
Mr. Lance, any follow-up?
Thank you. That did answer my question. I would still like to see more, but it sounds like there may be more focused thinking around this in the twenty-twenty-three budget, which will be helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr., Mr. Moderator. Monty Pearson, Precinct Three. In the, in the back, I'm just a little confused because in the backup, and it stated that the five-and-a-half million dollars left over is going to be used for the water and sewer projects. But it sounds like from the conversation that we were actually not going to do that and we're going to put the money in reserve for using in the future. Am I correct that that's what's, it's now being done?
Mr. Denizio.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, Mr. Pearson, the, that was meant to say that we could use it for the water and sewer, and that would probably be our focus area, but that we don't have to act right away. So yes, you're correct. We will hold and not spend that money right away because we don't have to permanently borrow that money right away either. We're not going to do the projects in one calendar year anyway. We'll short-term borrow the money and then be able to make a more educated decision on, on what to do with that.
Okay. So does that mean that five-and-a-half million goes into reserve or free cash? Where, where exactly is that money going to go? Mr. Moderator?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So that, that money will stay in that grant fund. So it will just be part of our cash balance, but it won't close to free cash. It won't be included in any calculations. It wouldn't be in stabilization or any of that. It would just sit in our regular pool of money, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Denizio, before I let you off the hook, was there a, a vote from the Selectmen on this article?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Selectmen voted four-zero-zero on this article.
Thank you. Music Theory Room, you have a question for us?
I don't have a question. I have a statement. I'd like to see this money put into whatever fund to lower our tax rate. I'm sorry all of these departments took a hit, but so did we in the town. We all got hit with the big tax increase. This week I got a five-hundred-dollar oil bill and a bill for an EpiPen for three-hundred-and-fifty dollars. So we're all hurting. So rather than spread this around to all of the departments, put it in whatever fund and try to lower our tax rate. And we all know, once our taxes go up, we never see the moon. So give the tax rate, the tax pay is a break.
Thank you, Mr. Angelo. Mr. Maury.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bruce Maury, Precinct One. Just to follow up on Nolan Lance's comment in the chat. If I could, I, I like to see a listing of the dollar amounts by department. If you can send that out via email, Amy and/or someone who's supporting the town meeting session tonight, or if you want to put them on the screen. I don't, my numbers, as I was writing them down, as we were reading them, Mr. Moderator, don't add up to five-hundred. So if somebody could display that, that would be helpful. Thank you.
All right, Amy's on it. Mr. Boyven.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Boyven again, Precinct One. Yeah, I'm, I'm following up a little bit on the comment from the, from one of the rooms about the tax rate. I'm not sure how this works. Is it possible for me to share my screen? Do you have to allow that, or how does that work? I just wanted to show a page from the operating budget and ten-year capital plan for FY twenty-two to help reinforce what I wanted to point out. If not, I can just walk my way through it, yeah?
I think you're going to have to walk your way through it. It's, it's, we could do if we were here in person, so it's not something I can do remotely.
All right. I'm looking at a page from that, you know, the operating budget and capital plan that's put out every year. And this was the most recent one, FY twenty-twenty-two. And to me, I look at all the recurring revenues that come in. Every single one of them has increased every year, including right through the, through the pandemic, with the exception of local receipts, which was down two million dollars from FY twenty-twenty to FY twenty-twenty-one. But, you know, the overall revenues from twenty went to one-forty-three million, twenty-one, one-forty-eight million, projected for next year, one-fifty-four million. The taxes went up almost five percent. And, you know, they continue to increase. We lost, like I said, two million dollars in local receipts. The local tax revenues went up a hundred, went up about six million dollars. So we seem to have more than covered the loss in local receipts by the continual raising of property taxes. So I agree with what that speaker was saying from one of the rooms. And it just seems to me like I don't see the economic impact that it sounds like other people are describing when I look at the overall numbers for the entire budget and the, the small reduction in local receipts. Even this, even the cherry sheet numbers went up, you know, during that whole pandemic of a year. So that's what I'm seeing, and maybe I'm being naive and looking at this, this, these big numbers for the whole budget, but I don't see much of an impact because we had a good safety net and we used the free cash. And now I see in the projected budget for FY twenty-twenty-two that we're, you know, trying to increase the, the free cash again. So that, that was my comment, and I don't know if Mr. Denizio has any comment on that or not. Thank you.
Mr. Denizio.
I, I don't have any, any, any comment other than I agree that the revenues and expenses increased last year when we approved the operating budget. I think that we talked about how we were going to feel the heat on the tax levy side because we were decreasing local receipts by a little bit, or by, by quite a bit at that time. Just add some of that back without feeling the pain on the tax levy. Feel like it's a good way to, to sort of get back there, something that doesn't have to be funded through that. That's all I really have to add.
Well, that's why I go back to my previous point about giving it to other sources and other allowable expenditures, like rewarding teachers and some of these specific individuals, or even, you know, not raising the tax rate next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyven. Science Hall, I see a hand up. Is there a question there? Mr. Bell, is there a question in the Science Hall?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Roger Bell, Precinct Six. Through you to Mr. Denizio. I, I'm, I understand what you're, how we're utilizing the money. I would say that I'm disappointed and not, you did a great explanation in terms of all the particular budgets that were amended to receive the money as well as how other expenditures were going to be utilized. How come we didn't see that in the backup? Fact is, it would have been nice to have all that information ahead of time.
Mr. Denizio, any comment on backup?
Yes, point taken. That's certainly an area we fell down on here. I just, I, we weren't really finished with the exact breakdown of it. We knew the departments that were going to go up. We were wrestling back and forth with the amounts and just didn't, didn't get it into the backup. We listed the departments, but not the amounts, and I think that's what you're referring to.
Well, it's not just the departments. They, they, they were, all the other funded components that you were discussing would have been helpful for the town by who is authorizing the use of the money to have all that information at their fingertips so that there is not so many questions because they could be more specific. Because the list is, is quite extensive from what you're telling us. And I think it would be imperative that this kind of information should be made available if, if it's expenditures of that nature.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Your point is well taken. Seeing no further questions?
Moderator, Gary Mercier, Precinct Three.
Mr. Mercier, your hand isn't raised. Science Hall, that's why the hand is still up?
Yes.
All right.
I was wondering, maybe we should use this eight million dollars to help us recover from the incoming commercial real estate abatements that are going to happen. And we're going to lose a fair amount of tax revenue from that. Is that something that could be used for, instead of rate, just cut our budget by eight million and use this to make up the difference? Because, I mean, we're going to have to cut taxes, uh, cut budgets, or we're going to raise taxes on the residents.
Mr. Denizio.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr., Mr. Mercier, that, that has been talked about, not to that, quite to that extent, but certainly a little bit in our conversation with both the Ways and Means Subcommittee and the Board of Selectmen about just that is, it's something we can be strategic about as, as we move forward and see exactly what that effect will be on the commercial tax levy and then targeting some of this money for relief for that. That is in the conversation. We wouldn't, we wouldn't, as I said before, we wouldn't be able to use the whole eight-point-five million because there is a limitation on it when you use it for revenue replacement. And there are some logistical things we would have to do differently, but I get your point, and we did talk about that. We certainly will be talking about it again. Again, not to that level of eight-point-five million, but I, 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 I can assure you, we are talking about something like that.
Okay, because, I mean, fifteen to twenty percent of the office space in this town is never going to get rented again. People need to realize that. It's going to have to be rezoned and used with something else because they're just not coming back. So, and that's a big hit. So, thank you.
Here, Science Hall, if you could drop your hand, please. Are there any other further questions? Any none? We'll put this to a vote. The source of the funds for this is oh, this, okay, so this is just a straight, straight majority funding request here. All right, Amy, we've got a poll to send out, please. Okay, breakout rooms, Music Theory Room.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Music Theory, 0 in favor, 0 abstained, 6 against.
Chorus Room.
4-0-0. Thank you.
Science Lecture Room.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. 2 in favor, 3 against.
There being 70 in favor, 27 opposed, and 6 abstentions, Article 4 passes. Let's move on to Article 5. Article 5 is as presented, as printed in the warrant. See if the town will vote to borrow the sum of $4 million for the purposes of paying costs for the reconstruction of the forced main at Francis Lyman Sewer Pumping Station. Ways and Means, their report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Ways and Means Committee voted 10-0 in favor of supporting this reconstruction. Town meeting last year approved the design of this, and this funding is for the reconstruction of the the fourth, the Francis Lyman, and its expected life, life, it's beyond its life expectancy, and it needs to be replaced, and it presents a sanitation issue to the town.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. Mr. Dinesio, is there a vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, 4-0-0. Board of Selectmen in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Sanchez, I imagine you're speaking on this?
Mr. Moderator, Mr. Hayes will speak on it, but we also presented this to the Capital Committee.
Oops, all right, I didn't mean to cut them out. Mr. Sinessi, Capital Budget.
Capital Budget, but voted 5-0 in favor.
Thank you. All right, now I guess it's Mr. Hayes' turn.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is Tom Hayes, town engineer. And this is the second of five major pump station rehabs that's been on a 10-year capital plan. The station was constructed in 1968, so it's beyond its 50-year useful life. The pump station itself has had, has a slew of internal problems. We actually have leaking pipes, the controls are out of date, you know, it's built on 1960 technology, electrical problems, control problems. The probably, the worst thing we have is the forced main. We have 5,000 feet of forced main that runs through the wetlands, and not twice in the last 10 years, our forced main is broke and discharged for our sewage out into the environment. So this $4 million will fund a complete rehabilitation of the existing station, new pumps, new controls, general rehab of the station. It's a can station, underground station, and then the forced main is 5,000 feet of Dr. Lyon. So we'll take this forced main and relocate it from the wetlands out into the road, so we won't have problems with access in the future, and we won't have discharge into the wetlands that we've seen in the past. So I hope you all support this, this project.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Ms. Newfeld, please. Phyllis, do you have a question? You have to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Phyllis Newfeld, Precinct 5. I have a question through you to whosever appropriate. While I have nothing against this expenditure, I'm very concerned why there was an inspection done that was very thorough, it appears, in 2012. So many deficits were found, and yet it's almost 10 years later that we're doing anything about it. Could someone explain to me why?
Mr. Hayes, is that under your jurisdiction, or you can pass it on to Mr. Sanchez?
No, I can take that. We did 14 stations, we have 14 pump stations in town, and we did a 2012, we visited all the stations, and we did a complete inventory assessment of conditions, and we prioritized them all. This is, this is number two of the major rehabs. We've gone through all the stations, and we've replaced all the things that were our priority. But in terms of a 10-year plan, we put them in play so that we can do a complete rehabilitation of these five stations over time. You know, we felt that it was time. Mckay, we pushed a little too long, and just before we, we did the rehab, we had a break in the forced main. This one, again, is at its useful life. It's time to rehab the station, and we have three other stations that you'll see in our 10-year plan, which will be coming to town meeting, one a year for the next couple, three years.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Any follow-up? Ms. Newfeld.
No, thank you.
Mr. Boyven.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Phil Boyven, Precinct 1. In my other hat, I am Vice Chair of the Conservation Commission, and I just wanted to report that the CONCOM approved the notice of intent for this project at the most recent meeting. It is, it was approved because of several reasons. First of all, the, the station itself, the new station will be on the same footprint as the old station. There are some stormwater handling improvements on the station footprint itself. They plan to remove some of the invasives that are surrounding that footprint, and the most important improvement is that the major improvement to the wetland resource area is that the pipes currently running in and near the wetland will be emptied, sealed, and abandoned. It will have no more potential for any kind of leakage like there has been in the past. The new pipe is gonna run down the middle of the street, so it will not be running through the wetland resource area at all. So for those positive reasons, we approved the notice of intent for the project and endorse its happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyven. Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Marty Pearson from Precinct 3. The question I would ask is that I'm under the assumption that we are going to be closing this water source in the next few years. How much longer is, is this field actually going to be used? And...
Sewer, Marty.
Yeah.
Mr. Hayes?
Well, this is a sewer pump station, so this, this, this pump station will be in service pretty much as long as we have sewer.
Okay, so it's not related to the Aquifer?
Nope, this is, this goes out the other end.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Webb.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yeah, Mr. Hayes, I have a question. Now, you have no problems with funding this article, but you, I hear there are numbers like there are 14 pump stations, and yet they're talking about five of these major projects. Now, are those the all-force main sewer projects you're talking about? This is one of the five? And how does that relate to the 14 pump stations in general?
Mr. Hayes?
Mr. Moderator, we have, over the last almost 10 years, we've done a lot of upgrades and rehabilitations to some of the smaller stations that don't need significant works. So there've been pumps, there's controls. We did, I don't know if you remember, the Terrace Hall pump station? That was, I believe that was an $8 million project, new forced main, complete rehabilitation station. That's our biggest one. The smaller stations, say Town Line, Keans Road, those have all been done through our operating budget, so those are smaller stations. These are the ones that are in dire need of work. Forced mains that are long and have problems, have had leaks in the past. Stations that the interior, you know, the air can is deteriorated. So these are major, so we have five major complete rehabilitations, and the other nine stations are all, you know, fairly minor things we can, we can take care of either in-house or maybe with small appropriations in the future, and I think that's a huge priority.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
A follow-up, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Sorry. So these three or four large stations that need rehabilitation in the next 10-year budget, you said three, I think, coming up, are they of similar amounts that will, that you'll come in with to fix each of those?
Well, the other, Mr. Moderator, the, the other station is a much smaller. This one is so expensive because we have 5,000 feet of new forced main that has to be put in the road. So the bulk of the money for this job is, is in the pipe.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Scott Martin, Precinct 7. In the back, there's no information about the schedule. So what's the schedule for this? And do you, it built into that schedule, or is there two or three years for supply chain delays?
Mr. Hayes?
Mr. Moderator, this is a one-season project. It's just a pipe job. So Dr. Lyon pipe is, you know, readily available, and the same with the pumps and, you know, the rehabilitation of the station. So this, this should be done in one season.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
What, what's one season? To me, a season starts yesterday and will be done in December. Are you talking about starting next spring?
Correct. This is a, for, our season is a construction season, so our season goes from, say, April 15th through about November 15th.
Thank you.
Anything further from anyone? I don't see any more hands raised. That case? It's time to put this to a vote. Orfield, if you could send out a poll for this? And this is going to be bonded, or it's going to require a 2/3 vote? Music Theory Room, do we have a vote?
We do, Mr. Moderator. Thank you. We were 5 in favor, 1 against, 0 abstained.
Chorus Room.
Chorus Room votes 4-0-0.
Science Lecture Room.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. 5 in favor, 0 opposed, no abstentions.
There being 88 in favor, 5 opposed, and 6 abstentions. This has more than the 2/3 required, so this motion passes. Article 6 has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee, and it is as printed in the warrant. Article 6 is to see if the town will vote to borrow or transfer from available funds or otherwise provide the sum of $15 million for the purpose of funding the construction of and paying costs for designing, constructing, programming, and configuration of Mill Pond PFAS filter addition. Ways and Means, Mr. Moran.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Ways and Means Committee voted 10-0 in favor of supporting this project. This will allow us to allow the Mill Brook Water Treatment or Water Plant to treat the PFAS issue that we have in the water until we, such time that we, that we get the MWRA water completely in.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. Capital Budget, Mr. Sinessi.
Capital Budget voted, voted 4-0-1.
Thank you. Mr. Dinesio, is there a vote of the Selectmen?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Select Board voted 4-0-0 in favor.
And who's speaking on this?
Mr. Moderator, John Sanchez, I will take this one.
Mr. Sanchez, be my guest.
Well, thank you. Thank you, everybody tonight. There was some backup that we provided in the town meeting, for the town meeting warrant article, however, there were other questions that we've been getting, and I have been fielding over the last few days, so I figured I'd probably address those ahead of any other questions that may happen tonight, so if you will allow me about five minutes to get through it. So why build a new filter facility at the Mill Pond for PFAS removal instead of using the MWRA connection as a water source alone? The short answer to this is that we need redundancy, and the construction timing of this line will not allow it. To, to be able to have a full connection with the MWRA, we still need quite a few construction seasons probably ending in 2024. This connection to the MWRA will require not only work by us, Burlington, but also by the MWRA, and they have their systems and the work they need to do in the capital plan, but that is a few years out before they actually improve their system to be able to carry the entire town of Burlington, if Burlington were to use the MWRA as a sole source. As you may recall, in May of 2018, Town Meeting approved Phase 1 of the MWRA project, and at that time, it was approved as a supplemental water supply. Phase 1 included the construction of the new water main on Adam Street, which is currently connected, in fact, since December of 2020, is connected to the Lexington's distribution system, and we have been using it continuously since May of this year. Unfortunately, this connection can only supply an average of 1 million gallons per day. Now, Burlington's daily average is about 3 million gallons a day, and in the summer, we can exceed that and get over 5 million gallons a day. So during the same town meeting in May 2018, we stated that there will be a Phase 2 of this project, and that Phase 2 will be designed to meet the entire needs of Burlington into the future for a total of 6.5 million gallons per day. This is how the project was permitted. This is how it was presented, not only to Town Meeting, but also to the Water Resources Commission and through the MEPA process that took us long into December of 2020, as a matter of fact. But we figure we're gonna go through all the permitting process, we're gonna build the pipe, we're gonna build it for what the town is gonna need well into the future. The plan also said that we will abandon the Vine Brook Treatment Facility, this is the groundwater treatment facility, and we will maintain the Mill Pond as our main water source with the MWRA water supplementing our water supply, as well as maintaining supply redundancy. At the time, we explained that Phase 2 was proposed to be constructed in FY '23 and FY '24. in FY twenty three and FY twenty four. As you can see, we're quite a few years away from that. In order to accelerate the connection to the MWRA, we divided the project into two, and we came back to Town Meeting in January of this year to ask for funding for what we call Phase Two A. Phase Two A is is part A of part one or two, which will give us about three and a half million gallons of water per day from the MWRA. Now, because of that vote, the pipe was designed, permitted, put out to bid, and is currently being awarded for construction. And we expect this main to be completed at the end of twenty twenty two, which is what we said at the Town Meeting in January of this year. However, this line alone cannot handle the entire supply for Burlington during periods of high water demand. It's also important to note that the Mill Pond Treatment Facility, which was renovated about, let's say like fifteen years ago, still has outstanding bonds through FY twenty seven. So we still owe money on it that we're paying yearly. Also, it's important to note that the water that we produce at the Mill Pond Treatment Facility will save us about a million dollars a year as compared to purchases water from the MWRA. Because of all these factors, the project timing, the long term redundancies needs of the town, this is why we're recommending that we upgrade the Mill Pond Treatment Facility such that we can get to a PFAS solution much sooner, which will be in about a year's time, year and a couple of months. And with the goal, long term goal being that we will have Mill Pond treated water and MWRA water in twenty twenty three that will meet the Masdeep's PFAS standards. So thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm ready to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Scott Martin, Precinct Seven. Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Thank you very much. You answered a lot of my questions. The one that I'd like to hear more about is will this upgrade to to Mill Pond allow us to reopen any of the existing wells that we are have closed because of their contamination to the PFAS that we can not only just draw off of what falls into the Mill Pond and possibly have E. coli contamination? Will we be able to open up any of the other wells that we've had to close in town? I guess is my main question. Thank you.
So and and Mr. Moderator, if I may, I just don't want to confuse Town Meeting with E. coli contamination and and those issues, which, by the way, and I do want to address it for one second. It had been reported and we posted it online that our belief was that there was a lab error when we had to go into the boil water order during the summer. So that was not really what that was contaminated. I just want to clarify that. But before we go into the other part of the project, we have two water treatment plants in Burlington. One is the Vinebrook, which has seven wells, three of which have been offline since two thousand and thirteen. And and our goal is to actually abandon that treatment facility. These filters will be located at the surface treatment plant, which is actually the Mill Pond that takes water from the Shawshank River. So we're not, we can't, it's not feasible to reopen those wells and bring water across town through new water mains to try to treat it at the other facility. Number one, number two, those wells are also contaminated by a different contaminant, which is one four dioxide, which this project, as it's proposed right now, will not take care of. This project is specifically to remove PFAS and not either one four dioxide or any other groundwater contaminant that may be present. So so the end, the short answer is no, the wells will remain closed and will propose to abandon the treatment plant as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Any follow up, Mr. Martin?
It it seems that is there possibility of the the Mill Pond, the Shawshank being having the dioxide contaminants or is this the modifications going to be set up so that it's easier to respond to the problems that are going to come down the pike? What happens if the Shawshank River goes because of drought? I mean, this year we had lots of water. But with climate change, that Shawshank River could become a trickle. I I I think we're being kind of short sighted by saying that we shouldn't be figuring out a little bit better how to keep everything up and running somehow. I don't know how, but is this is this going to be a a a way to, are we going to be able to expand the filtration system for something other than PFASs without major expenditures or without major changes that we have to come back in a couple of years because something else has gotten into the water?
Mr. Moderator, thank you. So when it relates to one four dioxide, we have tested the Mill Pond for one for dioxide, and we currently do not have a problem with that particular contaminant at that plant. Related to the filters that we're installing, the general answer is yes, we're actually proposing a larger building that what we actually would have needed, which will have additional space for additional filters if they may be needed in the future. And and again, the goal is we can have a list of any possible contaminant that will be regulated over the next ten years. But we'll leave in space at the plant to to address those as they may come. I think it's important that as we go along in the process over over whether it's five, ten, fifteen years into the future. I mean, we should be looking at what is happening to the regulations, what is happening to the water in the river and et cetera. That's a point well taken. Because we can't be blind to it. I mean, the the regulations do change over the years. And again, if this is why when we introduce a project for the MWRA, we introduce it as a project that could handle the entire town if need be. But I think that decision has to be left for the future. I think we should keep redundancy to our system. Redundancy is important. And as well as, at least in the near future, there will be savings from us producing the water as opposed to purchasing the water.
One last, one last comment, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, if I could.
Go ahead.
I was very disappointed in the your department, Mr. Sanchez. I had I found out that you were presenting information about this, the MWRA hookup. Because I'm I'm a friend of a Lexington Select Board member. And in order for me to get any updates about this project, I had to listen to the Lexington Select Board meeting that you attended. Is there any way that you can somehow send out monthly updates or something to the town to let us know what we're spending fifteen million dollars on?
If I'm, Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Sanchez.
The the fifteen million dollar is totally unrelated to the MWRA project, so I think that should be stated. And and yes, the meeting that we went to, the Board of Selectmen in Lexington, was to ask permission from their board to actually construct a pipe through their town. So it was not to get the project approved or getting a description on it. What we indicated to you in January and again in May has not changed. This is the same project. If you look at the backup again in January, and it said that we will go out to bid as our construction and haven't completed by next year, nothing has changed. So obviously, if there wasn't a type of update needed, I would be more than happy to give it. If things would have changed in any way, I would have been more than happy to state it as well. We just follow the process. There's many steps in the process, some of which have happened here locally through the Board of Selectmen and also outside of town through the Conservation Commission in Lexington, through the MWRA, through the Lexington Board of Selectmen as well. But nothing really has changed in the schedule. So which I'm happy to report that actually nothing has changed. We're still on target to what we told you in January.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Mr. Boyden, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you to Mr. Sanchez. This is just a what if question, John. What happens if for some reason, through necessity or public vote or whatever, we did shut down the Mill Pond facility? What would happen to the to the pond itself? I mean, obviously, at least I think obviously, we would no longer be allowed to fill it from the Shawshank River if we weren't using it for drinking water. So what would happen to the pond itself if we just stopped using it for a drinking water supply?
Mr. Boyden, you're getting a little bit off out of the realm of this warrant article.
I think it helps to decide.
Can you answer this question quickly?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I I will say that the permit that we have, Mr. Moderator, thank you, the permit we have is to use that water for drinking water. So we will not be permitted to do anything else. We'll have to go out for a different permit if such a permit exists.
Okay, I just wanted to point out that that might be a very detrimental just appearance for the for the for the town if it if it dried up, you know? It's not as simple as just turning off the water and having a nice a nice pond. Thank you.
Science Hall, you have a question there?
Hi, John Sacks, Precinct Seven. I just wanted to say that every summer, other than this rainy summer, and maybe even this one, there's been a great deal of anger expressed against the town because of the water bans. And there's a great deal of anger expressed against the town because of the tens and twenties of millions of dollars that we're spending to make the water safe. I would like to suggest that people consider that the reason that the wellfields are closed and reason we're spending this money, this fifteen million dollars, is because corporations poisoned our water. Corporations made money and poisoned our water. We have to pay tens of millions of dollars to fix this. That's where your anger should go, not at Mr. Sanchez, for responsibly keeping us safe. Corporations poisoned our water. Put your anger there. Let me ask one question. Is there any chance that any of those corporations are still in existence and we can sue them and try to get some of this money back?
Mr. Sanchez, any shot at that one?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. We we are investigating possible responsible parties in regards to the PFAS, particularly on the Shawshank River, to see how far we can get. We have, we've been doing some testing of the stream, which we'll continue to do, to try to determine what the major source of contamination may be and then follow up from that point of view.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Mr. Hardy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Hardy, Precinct One. Question for for John. I'm we talked about this a little bit at Ways and Means as well. But I'm I'm trying to trying to decide how much I like the Shawshank River now that I know it's the sole source of water for the Mill Pond. I I kind of looked it up, and the Shawshank River looks like it originates in in Bedford and then flows north up through Billrica, through Tewksbury, through Andover, Lawrence, and then eventually it empties into the Merrimack River, if I have this correct. So it's not a huge river. It doesn't actually go through Burlington, which is interesting. I guess what I'm wondering is how many other towns are taking water from Shawshank like Burlington is? Are there other towns that are similarly tied to to this river for their for their water supplies?
Mr. Moderator? So I I do know through wells, the town of Bedford also gets water not directly. It's not surface water for them, but the wells are really next to the river. So I mean, that's where the water is coming from. And and we do get our water prior to it going to Tewksbury, Wilmington, and the other towns that you did mention. Now, we are very much regulated on when we can use this water. Typically, when the river goes down and and you see it as a trickle, we are not taking water from the river. We take water from the river mainly in the fall, winter, and spring. Which, by the way, this is one of the reasons why we're going through water bans, because through the summer, we can't refill the reservoir. There is not enough water in that river to it. So again, we we do it when there is a larger amount of water flowing through the river. That's when we use it as a water source.
Quick, quick follow up, Mr. Moderator. So you you said Bedford and Burlington. Are there other towns or are those the only towns that are drawing?
Those are the only towns that I'm aware of. I I I don't want to speak. I know Wilmington has some wells nearby, but I'm not certain of that. So I'm only going to talk about the ones that I was certain of.
Okay, all right. Yeah, it just it seems like we're reliant on this source that we don't have really much control over. You know, in terms of the quality and what's going on. So it's a little concerning, but it is what it is. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. Mr. O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Patricia O'Brien, Precinct Two. I have two questions. Thank you. One is related to PFAS and the other is related to the money. And so through you to Mr. Sanchez. On the backup, it says that the Adam Street Connection provides a million gallons per day to reduce the impact of PFAS in the distribution system. Can you actually tell us in measurement, how much it's reducing the impact of the PFAS by adding the one million gallons?
So I I want to be, Mr. Moderator, just to answer that, I want to be clear on how the impact is reduced, and it's not reduced by percent by by area. So so since our average is about three million gallons a day, in a million gallons comes from the MWRA. So the area closest to Adam Street is the one that will see that water from the MWRA. The area on the other part of town will see mostly Mill Pond water. So so in general terms, as an average, you can say it's one one third. But it doesn't mean it's really one third. For some people, it's a hundred percent. For all, it was zero.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
Okay, thank you. That that's extremely helpful. And will the Adam Street Connection be maintained through the building of the PFAS filtration system?
Yes, DEP mandated that we opened it, and we actually did that in May. And it has remained open since, and it will remain open through the construction and and probably past the construction of this facility.
Okay, thank you. My second question is, I understand the federal government is really recognizes that this is a a problem across the country. And so also understand that there is anticipated federal money to help with mitigation. So what would happen in the event that we say yes, please go ahead and do this, and then there is federal money? Do we lose out on that federal money?
So if I may, Mr. Moderator, so what this vote will do is will allow us to actually borrow funds. And so we we took the initiative early on in this project to actually ask the state to get an emergency approval for funding through the SRF program, that is the State Roller Fund program. And and the reason we did that is twofold. One is typically for projects like this, they either have either a very low interest or zero percent interest. But the second one is that in the past, when there have been any type of federal funds coming into citizen towns and different, you know, like we're talking about like what happened with with a infrastructure package that was put out by Obama. And now the one that they're talking about with the feds, the way the state of Massachusetts routes those funds through is through this SRF funding program. So we were lucky that we were already approved through that program. I mean, we've we engaged them early and we filled out every single form that you could imagine to actually get approved for it. But what it will do is, if there is any type of principal forgiveness, as it was from the last infrastructure package, it is through this fund that we will see it. So actually, this serves us to get those funds if any of them are available.
Thank you very much, and I apologize that my camera's off. I have low bandwidth. Thank you.
Did you recognize me?
Yes, I did, Mr. Kelly.
Yes, the question is, in general, what is Yes, the question is, in general, what is the bond rate, the interest rate we have on bonds, and do we, are we pretty sure through some state or federal program, we're going to be able to borrow this money at substantially less than the standard bond rate we experience?
Who wants that? Mr. Denizio?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Kelly, in our modeling, we use a conservative number of four to four and a half percent for longer-term projects like this. We don't expect it to be anywhere near that. In fact, at least half of that, probably. So we expect on regular projects right now that they're in the twos. I think something like this that will potentially have either some federal backing to it or a program like Mr. Sanchez described in the SRF that was going to have less, I think we're quite certain we'll get a nice low rate for this. That won't happen for a couple of years now. I guess it could happen earlier if the program came about and was approved, and we got accepted into the SRF, say, we could sign on to that rate now, but we won't permanently borrow for a couple of construction seasons till we're done.
Thank you, Mr. Denizio. Any follow-up? Mr. Kelly? I guess not. All right. Ms. Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chris Warren, Precinct Four. And pardon me if I'm going firefields here. My question is, what happens to the Vinebrook Treatment Plant? What happens to that land when it goes offline?
You're right, Ms. Warren, you are going.
Off-topic?
Yep.
Okay. Little firefield? Okay.
Firefields.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Connors? Have the last hand up at the moment.
I'll move the question, I guess.
No, don't do that. We have to take a vote on it. You have the last hand.
All right, never mind.
Let me make sure that's correct. Are there any further questions out there? Seeing none, let's take a vote. Poll is out. You've got 30 seconds. Make up your minds. Okay, let's go to the breakout rooms. Corus, excuse me, Music Theory Room. Do you have a vote?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We had four in favor, one abstained, one opposed.
Thank you. Corus Room.
Corus Room votes four, zero, zero.
Thank you. Science Lecture Room.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Five in favor, zero opposed, zero abstention.
Thank you. They're being 85 in favor, nine opposed, and seven abstentions. This article passes with more than two-thirds majority required. Article seven, moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee, and it is as presented in the warrant, but it's to see if the town will vote to transfer from the Affordable Housing Fund $30,000 to fund consulting services for an Affordable Housing Needs Assessment. Going to ask for the proponent, or for a presentation from the proponent, is Carrie Donahue. Did I get your name correctly, Carrie?
You did. I think actually my fellow committee member, Ernie Cavino, is going to speak briefly first.
Oh, we have, okay, Mr. Cavino then.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm the Planning Board's representative to the Housing Partnership Committee, and I'm here with Carrie Donahue, who is one of the newest members of the Housing Partnership Committee. Carrie works at Harvard University's Center for Housing Studies, which is a nationally-recognized organization. And if you can give me 15 seconds, just a brief history on the Housing Partnership Committee, if I could, Mr. Moderator.
I'll give you 15 seconds, but not six.
Okay, I'll take 12, I hope. Okay, so the Housing Partnership Committee was formed as a Housing Opportunity Partnership Committee more than 30 years ago as a result of two very unfriendly 40Bs that approached the town, and actually, the town ended up in court with them for settlement. Those are the upperitum and the units, I guess they're called Avalon now, on Center Street across from Marion Tavern. Think of that time was to develop a committee that would be proactive regarding affordable housing. The Housing Opportunity Partnership Committee has made recommendations to the Select Board regarding affordable housing, has held lotteries that affordable housing becomes available, and really has not met more than quarterly until probably the last year or so, when we've started meeting monthly and sometimes more than monthly. But it's now a very invigorated committee and ready to do some good work with that. I will ask Carrie to do her presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cavino.
Thanks, Eric. Thank you. As I already mentioned, I'm Carrie Donahue. I've lived in Burlington since about 2013, and I've been member of the Housing Partnership Committee for a little over a year now. Before I dig into the warrant article, I want to give a very quick overview of affordable housing in Burlington, just so we're all on the same page and know what we're talking about. So next slide, please. So first of all, what do we mean when we say affordable housing? I want to clear that up right off the bat. So a lot of people think affordable housing refers to public housing or subsidized housing, and that's not really true, and it's also not what we're talking about in this warrant article. Affordable housing is a broad term. It simply means housing that's affordable to people at a range of income levels. So one way to think about it is sort of affordable housing with a capital A versus affordable housing with a lowercase a. Affordable housing with a capital A refers to public and subsidized housing. So we're talking about seniors' housing at reduced rents, Section 8 vouchers, and that kind of thing. Affordable housing with a lowercase a, which is what we're talking about in this warrant article, means housing that's affordable to someone making the median income of an area. So we're talking about an entry-level home that's affordable to a first-time homebuyer, a market-rate apartment that's affordable to an average worker, that kind of thing. And it's really important to understand the distinction between these two, and it's important to understand how it plays out in Burlington. Next slide, please. So there's two entities in town that primarily oversee affordable housing. The Burlington Housing Authority manages that sort of capital A affordable housing. They have two developments for seniors and people with disabilities, Bridgecrest Arms and Tower Hill, up near the center of town, and they manage the Section 8 voucher program. They are entirely funded by state and federal agencies, and they're essentially independent of the town. They don't have anything to do with the sort of lowercase a affordable housing. Next slide, please. So the Burlington Housing Partnership Committee that Ernie and I are on is a separate entity that was put in place, as he said, about 30 years ago. We're an advisory committee to the Select Board, and we oversee that lowercase a affordable housing. We try to make sure that we have enough housing that's affordable to those median-income, average-income residents. We monitor both affordable housing rental units, and we also monitor affordable homeownership opportunities. So you can, I don't know if you can see them on the slide, but there's before and after photos there of a single-family home on South Bedford Street that's been affordable housing for the town for a number of years, but fell into disrepair. So over the last year, our committee's been overseeing, gutting it, renovating it with a lot of help from local contractors and donated services. And we're going to be putting that up for sale through an affordable housing lottery for a first-time homebuyer later this fall, and I think there's a warrant article for that coming up in a little bit. Next slide, please. So this warrant article that our committee's presenting is to conduct an independent and objective housing needs assessment, which we feel is something long overdue to understand our town's, both our current and projected, affordable housing needs. So the assessment would be conducted by MAPC, which is a nonprofit regional planning agency. As Moderator mentioned, it is $30,000, which would come from the town's existing affordable housing fund, so there's no new appropriation here. And because it'll be done by an outside firm, both at a lower cost than, for instance, a consultant would be, because MAPC is a nonprofit, the assessment will be far more detailed and comprehensive than, for instance, the work that was done for the housing component at a master plan a few years ago. First and foremost, it's going to include brand-new 2020 census data, but it's also going to include qualitative data that's going to be done through community outreach, the goal of which is to reach the greatest cross-section of our population that we can. MAPC is going to hold forums and one-on-one interviews to hear from not only homeowners, but also renters, young families, seniors, professionals, low and modest-income residents. We really want to make sure we hear from as many diverse people as possible and really understand our town's affordable housing challenges. And one of the unexpected kind of upsides of the pandemic is what we're doing right now, having a town meeting online, because this makes community meetings so much easier for people to attend. So for instance, young parents who can't get a babysitter at 6:00 PM on a Wednesday night can log on, and they'll be able to talk directly to MAPC and give us their variants and their housing challenges. So that's a really huge advantage of this particular assessment that's going to help us hear from as many people as possible. Next slide. So why is it necessary? As I said, it's never been done in Burlington. We've done a lot of work to look at our town's housing more broadly, but we've never looked specifically at this particular issue of affordable housing. And here, like everywhere, there is a shortage of housing that's available and affordable to median-income Americans. It is far more difficult to buy a house right now than it was 10, 20, even five years ago. Many of us who are lucky enough to own a home in Burlington wouldn't be able to afford to buy one here if we sold our house. And rents have soared at the same time. So people on fixed incomes are watching their housing costs go up while their incomes stay exactly the same. So we basically just want to ensure that those who have worked really hard to live here can continue to do so comfortably, and that those who would like to live here have equal opportunity to do so. Next slide. So what will the assessment tell us? First, it's going to tell us what gaps exist in our housing stock. So can people who've lived here their whole lives afford a comfortable place to retire? The older adult population in the U.S. over the next 20 years is projected to grow from 48 million to 79 million. Having the right housing for older residents is a problem now, but it's going to get worse. And we need to ensure that we have homes with single-floor living, accessible bathrooms, all the other features that are necessary for seniors to age comfortably. But also, can children who grow up here buy a home here and raise their own families in Burlington? Do we have homes that are affordable to first-time homebuyers? I think most people in town have a pretty good sense that these are our biggest affordable housing challenges, but the assessment is going to answer those questions, provide data to back it up, and also will make recommendations on how to address those gaps. Perhaps even more importantly, though, it's going to tell us if we have housing gaps that are somewhat less visible. Is our housing equitable? Are people and families, other people and families who aren't being served, and those who work here afford to live here? Thousands of people come here every day. We rely on them for services. If they'd like to live here, what challenges do they face in being able to do so? Are the types of rental housing that we have aligned with our renters' needs? These are the sort of questions we've not dug into as a community, and if we're going to improve our housing, then we need to understand the issues. Next slide. Finally, why is it important? Basically, if we want Burlington to be a vibrant and diverse community, people of all ages and means, then we need to identify where our housing stock isn't meeting both our current and our projected needs. There are a lot of things we can do to address the affordable housing gaps, but we can't do any of them until we fully understand the problem. As a friend of mine said, you can't fix what you don't measure. So I hope you'll support us in this warrant article, and I think both Ernie and I are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Ways and Means, do you have a recommendation on this article?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Ways and Means Committee voted 11-0 in favor of this.
Thank you. Capital Budget.
Capital Budget voted five, I'm sorry, four, one on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Sinessi.
Thank you.
Land Use Committee, did you take a position on this?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Moderator, Land Use voted 7-0 in favor of this item.
Thank you very much. We'll open it up for questions now. Any questions from the body? Lost my participant list. Mr. Kaski, do you have a question?
Yes. I keep getting his feedback.
You have more than one device on, I'm being told. Can you send a question to us via chat? Can't hear you.
How do I turn one off?
I don't know what to tell you to do, Mr. Kaski, but you can, you can click on the chat function and send us a question.
All right.
While Mr. Kaski's doing that, let's move on. Mr. Boyven?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Boyven, Precinct One. I just would like to say that I am in support of this for the reasons I see in my own neighborhood. The typical single-family home in my neighborhood goes on the market for 500 grand, is bought for 600 grand by a developer, and then is torn down. And these are perfectly usable, you know, first family, first-time homeowner, suitable residences, and that process is happening over and over and over in this area where I am, and it is strictly for the benefit of a handful of well-to-do individuals, both the developers and the people who can afford a house for one and a half million dollars. So I'm in favor of doing a housing needs assessment and ultimately doing something to help make more affordable, single-family homes available. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyven. Ms. Prendergast?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Michelle Prendergast, Precinct Five. I was going to say the exact same thing that Mr. Boyven just said. If this study and this assessment can do anything to prevent what is happening everywhere where people are being outpriced for the sake of a group who want to build huge homes that most people cannot afford, who have been living here and the children have been living here, I support this as well, if that will be one of the goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Prendergast. Science Hall, I see you're hand up.
Hi, John Sacks. I, Precinct Seven, I'm also speaking from two other points of view. I was in Master Plan Steering Committee for two or three years, and the most difficult issue that we really never resolved is affordable housing. So I think that this is extremely welcome. The other point of view is as chair of the CPA Committee, which, if we can get it passed in the future, would supply money for affordable housing, significant money that would make a difference. This thing is only asking us to spend $30,000 of money that's already been appropriated for a study, so I think it's essentially kind of a no-brainer. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Ms. Byer?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kathy Byer, Precinct Two. I want to agree that this is a very good move, and $30,000 is a bargain with the MAPC to be able to come in and do a study that will lead to not only the assessment, it will help us identify a way forward, and it will also give us some backup going for other funding in our future plans. And so I believe that we will be seeing benefits from this study far down the road. So $30,000 is actually a bargain. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Byer. Ms. Rappaport, my apologies, I should have recognized you earlier and gotten a recommendation and vote from the Planning Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to note that the Planning Board voted in support of this article, 7-0. I just wanted to note that the Planning Board voted in support of this article, uh, seven zero.
Thank you, Mr. Rappaport.
Mr. Moderator, can you, can you hear me now? This is Gary Kasky.
Yes, Mr. Kasky, we can hear you.
Like, can I ask my question now?
No, we don't want to hear you anymore. Yes, please, go ahead, Mr. Kasky.
All right, was Gary Kasky, Precinct Six? I was just, uh, curious as to, uh, on the Affordable Housing Fund, how much is in that fund?
Sure, I can answer that. So the, the fund has approximately eight hundred thousand dollars in it. About six hundred thousand of that is from negotiations with the Davis Properties a few years ago. So it's, it's a significant amount, but it's not an endless amount. So the spending the thirty thousand dollars to figure out how to move forward and spend the rest of the money in the account over the coming years in, in smart ways is, is we think the best, the best step forward.
And the other question I have is, how did you arrive at the Affordable Housing Fund? Where did this money come from?
As I said, about six hundred thousand of what's in there right now came from negotiations the town had with the Davis Properties. And the other two hundred thousand, I'm not sure exactly. Actually, I noticed that both Eileen Sickler and Ernie are on the meeting as well. Eileen is a, another committee member with a strong financial background. I don't know if you can speak to that, Eileen?
No, I think you've answered, answered my question sufficiently. Thank you very much.
Mr. Brown, Mr. Elliot Brown, well, have a question? You do, we need you to turn on your microphone. Mr. Brown, we need you to unmute. Should be a little mute button down the bottom of the screen. Mr. Brown, when I look at my screen, right in the, down at the bottom of it, there's, there's a button that, that I click on. Hit it, it says mute. So you should hit that.
There we go. How's that?
Here we go.
Good. The, the results of this survey then leads to the next question is, what, what town policies can be developed to influence the range of housing being built in town? Do we already know what the possibilities are that the town can do to influence how housing is built?
Uh, Ms. Donahue or Mr. Covino?
Sure, I can speak to that. So there's, there are a lot of different things that the, the assessment can tell us. But one of the things that we're most interested in is whether or not they're going to recommend that we form a municipal affordable housing trust, which you may have noticed was originally in the warrant for this evening, but we pulled back because we wanted to get through the assessment first and really find out if that's something we want to move forward with. But briefly, a, an affordable housing trust is a public entity where ba- basically the town would have far more flexibility and nimbleness to, for instance, buy a single family small ranch that comes on, on the market before it gets snapped up by a developer and keep that as a small affordable housing unit. They can also purpose existing buildings, it can perform maintenance on existing affordable housing, provide down payment assistance to buyers, those sorts of things. There's a lot of different things that the trust would be able to do, so we're hoping that we get some strong data from them to inform whether or not we would move forward with that.
That's good. Thank you. There are remedies that the town can do. Thank you.
Are there any further questions on this article? Mr. Kelly.
Trust get the money? Would there be a tax or a fee on property transfers?
I think the beginning of your question was muted, Jack.
I'll try again. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Where would the trust get the money? Would there be a tax or a fee on transfer of properties or where would that come from?
So there's a lot of different ways that a, a trust can be funded. That would be one of them. We haven't gotten far long enough in the process to know if that's something we'd explore. As someone else mentioned, the Community Preservation Act could be a source of funding. There are a hundred and twenty-three communities in, in Massachusetts that have affordable housing trusts, and they've all set them up in different ways, whatever works best for their community. So there's a lot of different options.
Donahue. Mr. Sinessi.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Adam Sinessi, Precinct One. I, every vote that I take on town meeting, I, I, first, I want to say I support this because I believe that if we are going to move forward with affordable housing on any level, it should be done in a planned fashion. That said, we're beholden to the state to maintain a ten percent threshold of affordable housing in Burlington. I've heard a lot of debate tonight or discussion trashing in some ways, in, in, in certain ways, I would say, the McMansions that we're seeing sprout up around town. And a McMansion is not for me. But at the same token, it's pri- it's someone's private property and it's not for us to determine how they should treat their property. And I also don't believe as a town meeting member, it's for us to try and lower the average home value in Burlington and, and weight the value of a home down. This is a lot of people's most valuable asset. And when we weight the value of the average property down, we're also weighting the, um, the, the assessed value of property in town down, which contributes to the tax, the tax revenues and our ability to fund the town employees and the schools and the sidewalks and the things that we do as town meeting. So I, I do support this planned approach, but I don't appreciate that the only path forward is that we have to, I, I, I do think that there is a voice in town for people that want to leave a cap for affordable housing at ten percent. Is, do we have to go any further down this road than that? Are we beholden to anyone to do that?
Can I respond to a couple of those points?
Go ahead, Ms. Donahue.
Sure. I think those are all valid concerns. I think it's really important to know that research shows that affordable housing, the presence of more affordable housing does not in fact dampen down or in any way tamper home values. And in fact, in most cases, keeps them steady or in, in some cases, actually raises property values. So we're not trying to weight any property values down. That's just simply not what happens. We are above the ten percent threshold for affordable housing in Burlington, but that means that we're meeting the, the minimum, we're slightly above it, but there's certainly a ways, a ways forward we could go. Again, I go back to if we want to be equitable and if we want to have, you know, our seniors be able to retire here and stay in our community. If we want their kids to be able to grow up and, and buy a home here, then it's important to understand these issues and it's important to actually take proactive steps to address them.
Thank you. Mr. Boyven, I see your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Boyven, Precinct One. Uh, I agree with what the, the last speaker just said. I think the fact that these houses get billed in larger and larger numbers, it tends to change the population dynamic of the town and the, and the future of the population of the town. We're moving more away from our historical blue collar type of community to more of a white collar community. And as was pointed out, that means that families that live here cannot live here in their retirement or have their children live here, which to me is sad. So, um, you know, I'm, I'm, I can see both sides that, you know, this is my property and if I want to sell it to the highest bidder, I should be able to. But it doesn't mean necessarily that I would not be able to sell it to a proper, for a proper price. It's just might change who the buyer is. And the buyer might be now this affordable housing group of some sort that would then control what was done with my property after I sold it. So, um, I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Mr. Sinessi, I still see your hand up. Do you have anything further?
No, that was all. I'll take the hand down.
Thank you. See no further questions? Let's put this to a vote. Poll is on its way out. Hey, can I get the, the vote from the breakout rooms, the chorus room? Excuse me, music theory room, please, first.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We were one in favor, zero abstentions, and five opposed.
Chorus room.
Chorus room votes three, one, zero.
Thank you. Science, lecture room.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. We have, uh, two in favor, two opposed, one absten- one abstention.
Thank you. There being seventy-five in favor, fourteen opposed, five abstentions. Note, the article passes.
Thank you.
Article eight. It has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee to see if the town will vote to transfer from stabilization the sum of a hundred fifteen thou- hundred fifty thousand dollars to cover the cost of interest calculated on property tax abatements.
Gary Giannino, would you like me to, uh, give a brief intro for this article?
Is that speaking?
Gary Giannino.
Mr. Giannino, of course, I'm, I, I lost my train of thought, Gary. Yes, I asked you to do that, so please, if you would.
Pleasure. Members of town meeting, this article is a result of a, uh, one of our commercial ho- uh, owners filing for an abatement, uh, through the Board of Assessors. The Board of Assessors, uh, this goes back to the year fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. The Board of Assessors did not agree with Macy's retail holding. They then brought it to the appellate tax board. And on July eleventh of two thousand nineteen, the appellate tax board, uh, granted the Macy's retail holding, uh, abatement for three years. Forty-seven thousand for two fourteen, a hundred and ten thousand for two fifteen, and a hundred and five thousand for two sixteen. Under Mass General Law, we are required to pay interest at a rate of eight percent. So the one fifty that you're being asked to this evening to vote for, on the stabilization account, uh, is, is just in fact that it's a hundred and fifty thousand for the interest for those three, uh, abatements that go back to two thousand fourteen. We cannot use free cash, uh, as payment, as free cash at this point is not certified.
Thank you, Mr. Giannino. Ways and Means, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ways and Means supported this article eleven zero, uh, to pay the interest from the stabilization fund.
Thank you. And Mr. Denizio, is there more you'd like to add to this?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, I would add that the Select Board voted four zero zero in favor and that Mr. Giannino was right that normally this probably would have been, uh, coming from free cash. But absent the certification of that, those funds aren't available. Potentially, we could come back in January to replenish the stabilization fund. But that's a conversation I guess we'll have with Ways and Means come January.
Thank you, Mr. Denizio. Questions from the body on this? Mr. Glance.
All right, I was having trouble unmuting. Nolan Glance, Precinct One. Can we get a summary of the current balances, um, of the stabilization fund and the as yet uncertified free cash?
Mr. Moderator, if I may, uh, Nolan, the balance in the, uh, stabili- stabilization account is, uh, roughly ten million, three hundred thousand.
Thank you, Mr. Giannino. I believe we don't know what the free cash is because it's not certified yet, Nolan.
Correct. Well, I understand it's not certified yet and what, I assume we have a draft uncertified balance, no?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Denizio.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, uh, so yes, free cash has not been certified. Last year it was certified, sixteen million, seven hundred thousand. We used, uh, you know, over three million of that. Uh, we did have some significant turnbacks this year, so we do expect free cash to, um, to go up. The exact number, uh, not known yet, but, um, projected to be higher than last year's certification.
Thank you, Mr. Denizio. Further, follow up, Nolan.
Thank you. Can I answer my question?
See no further questions on this article? Put it to a vote. It's Warfield, if you could send out the poll. Even five minutes. I want to, when the poll went out with the time limit of five minutes, but you're not getting all that time.
He says, Mr. Moderator.
All right, let me get the votes from the breakout rooms. Music Theory Room, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We are five in favor, zero abstained, one opposed.
You? Chorus room.
All right, chorus room votes four, zero, zero.
Thank you. Science Lecture Hall.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, um, four in favor, one opposed, no abstentions.
You? There being seventy-eight in favor, two opposed, and ten abstentions. This article passes with more than two thirds majority. Okay. Article nine has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee and is as presented in the warrant. This is a housekeeping issue with bond counsel had a question on some of the language when this was voted on back in January. So we need to vote. Let's go to that town council. There was an issue on notice relative to the virtual town meeting through the selectmen. But anyway, we voted in favor of it, eighty-five, four, and five against. We needed two-thirds, so hopefully we can match that. Are there any questions on this? There none? Let's vote. Miss O'Brien, I see your hand came up.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Patricia O'Brien, Precinct Two, through you to John Sanchez. If we could just take this opportunity to update the community on how we are doing with the nine, I believe it was nine, conditions under which this was approved. Can you speak to that, please?
You're really stretching things here, Pat. The question is whether we wish to do it again or not. Just trying to affirm our previous vote.
Yeah, I understand. I would like an update if that would be possible. I'm not asking for anything long.
I know you're asking for an update, but I'm sorry, I'm ruling it out of order. This is just to affirm our previous vote.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, can I get a vote from breakout rooms? Never mind, I can't do that yet. And now I can ask for them. Music theory room.
Come back to us, Mr. Moderator. I'll type.
What was that? I missed that one. Back to them, all right, chorus room.
Chorus room votes four, zero, zero.
Thank you. Science lecture hall.
Mr. Moderator, five in favor, zero opposed, zero abstention.
You? Music theory, do we have a vote now?
Yes, we do, Mr. Moderator. We are six in favor, zero abstention, zero opposed.
Thank you. There being seventy-two in favor, six opposed, and ten abstentions. This motion passes. Okay. Need to ask permission to take Articles fourteen out of order. I'd like to take Articles ten and fourteen together. They both are related, so we can discuss them both together. Do I hear any objections to that?
So moved.
Okay. Since it's kind of hard to ask for votes, is there anybody objecting to it? If there is, then I will have to ask for a vote. There are none. So we'll proceed with Articles ten and fourteen. Article ten has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee and is as printed in the warrant. Article fourteen has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee, and it is also as printed in the warrant. Article ten is to see if it's vote to authorize the Select Board to file a home rule petition. And Article fourteen is to see if the town will vote to amend Article two, Section two, Town Meeting Members, paragraph five, as follows. And as I, I'll let Ms. Warfield explain these two articles and why we need them.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. To clarify why we have to do these two, or why these two articles are being turned together. A section of our general bylaws actually is, comes out of our special act, Act six eighty-six of nineteen seventy, that controls and outlines what do at town meeting. And so back in two thousand twelve, when we were redistricting and re-presenting, the wording was put into it that specifically talked about it being in two thousand twelve when we add a precinct. And so at this point in time, since we are at a point where we are re-presenting, my suggestion to general bylaw was to remove that specific date and to put the wording that you currently see in front of you. And the two, the home rule petition and our general bylaw mirror each other. So that's the reason for having these two articles that seem like they're the same thing. We have to go, we have to make the change to the general bylaw, but we also have to go to the legislature and get our home rule petition changed to do that. That's it.
Bylaw Review Committee? Does there, you have a position on this, Mr. Martin?
The Bylaw Review Committee voted three, zero, for in favor in recommending this article. For ten and four, zero for Article fourteen.
Thank you. Anybody else who has, the other committees reviewed this? I think so. I guess we'll open it up to questions from the board, from the body? Have a question? Ms. Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chris Warren, Precinct Four. I'm not sure I understood the, what the speaker said from the Bylaw Review Committee. I thought he said that they voted more against than in favor. And if I understood that, then what was the reason?
I believe they said they voted three, zero in favor of Article ten and four, zero in favor of Article fourteen.
That's cor- that's correct.
Oh, okay, thank you. I misheard that then. Thank you.
Mr. Moran.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Moran, Precinct Three. Just a quick question. Does this actually impact the number of precincts that are allotted, or is this just matching what's in the bylaw or the general law?
This does not affect the number of precincts at all. We are still going to be at seven precincts.
Thank you.
Chorus room, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Marina Saltman, Precinct Two. I want to speak against Article fourteen. And please give me the opportunity to explain why. First of all, we have a hundred and twenty-six town meeting members. But tonight, as the count has been going on, it's dwindled from a hundred to ninety to eighty-eight. And as Bill, yeah, Bill Belichick, our famous Patriot coach, would say, do your job. Town meeting members, are you doing your job? You're not even here tonight. To take this another step further, when there's a vacancy in a precinct, Amy, who does a marvelous job, God bless her, gathers, informs the precinct members to gather together to vote on a nominee to fill that vacancy. I have attended many of these vacancy precinct meetings. There'll be three town meeting members there, maybe five, hopefully seven. I've even attended one meeting when one town meeting member showed up and that person was able to elect the person to fill the vacancy. Again, as Bill Belichick would say, town meeting members, do your job. And now we come to the voters at large, who don't even turn out relative to Article fourteen when we have a town election. If we get fifteen percent of our registered voters to show up, that's about average. And yet, this article is based on if there's a tie between two town meeting members in a precinct. So at this point, I'm going to say what Hillary Clinton would say, what difference does it make? We're not showing up, so just flip a coin. Thank you.
Marina Saltman. Any further questions? Ms. Warren, could you lower your hand? In chorus room, lower your hand. Thank you. So you no further questions? Let's put this to a vote. The vote first on Article ten? Warfield, if you could send out a poll. Can I get the vote from the breakout rooms, please? Music theory room?
Music theory was six in favor, zero abstention, zero opposed.
Thank you. Chorus room?
Chorus room votes three, one, zero.
You? Science lecture hall.
Mr. Moderator, two in favor, three opposed, zero abstention.
Thank you. There being seventy-one in favor, twelve opposed, and nine abstentions. Article ten passes. Now let's move on to Article fourteen. Send out the poll. I'll give him five minutes. Okay, breakout rooms. Music theory, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Six in favor, zero abstained, zero opposed.
Chorus room?
Chorus room votes three, one, zero.
You? Science lecture hall.
Mr. Moderator, two in favor, three opposed, zero abstention.
You? There being seventy-two in favor, five opposed, and eight abstentions, Article fourteen passes. Okay, let's go back to what we skipped. Article twelve, eleven. Article eleven has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee and is as presented in the warrant. And was to see if the town will authorize the Select Board to sell, convey, and otherwise transfer our property located at one seventeen South Bedford Street for the purpose of providing affordable housing. Okay. Select Board, who's speaking on? Mr. D'Nizio, I assume?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So the purpose of the article, as the name suggests, is to, is to grant the Select Board permission to sell this property at one seventeen South Bedford. You remember that this body approved an appropriation of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars back in May of two thousand nineteen to purchase a property that had been abandoned and was in pretty bad shape. So that purchase happened and that cost about a hundred and fifty-three thousand of that two hundred and fifty appropriation. Another ninety-seven thousand was spent to update the house, get it up to code, fix it up and get it ready for resale. There was, there was also some additional money spent prior to us purchasing the property, and there will be some more money spent for us to sell the property. So the idea is for, this vote is to authorize the Select Board to sell the property, and the Select Board will work with the Housing Partnership Committee and the Affordable Housing Coordinator to nail down a price that will have a full cost recovery of all the costs that are associated with the property, so that we at least make all of our money back while still having the property remain affordable.
Thank you, Mr. D'Nizio. Ways and Means, did you take a position on this article?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, we did. We voted eleven, zero in favor to support this.
You? The capital budget, any position?
Capital budget did not take a position.
Thank you, Mr. Sinessi. Who else may have taken a position? Any board or anyone have anything to say on this? Doesn't sound like it.
No, Mr. Moderator, we did not take a position on this.
Thank you. Okay, let's put it open to the board, open to the body for questions. Sell us.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just want to clarify and make sure that this, when they sell this property, there will be a deed rider on it for affordable housing, and will that be in perpetuity?
I believe it's part of the warrant article, Ms. Ellis.
Just want to make sure.
Denizio, anything further to add on that?
I do. Mr. Moderator, I agree it's part of the warrant article, and that is the plan, yes.
Thank you. Further questions? Ms. Ellis, if you could lower your hand, please? Don't want to confuse me. Seeing none, let's just do a vote. All going out. Okay. If I could get the votes from the breakout rooms. Music Theory Room?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Four in favor, one abstention, one opposed.
Chorus Room?
Chorus votes four, zero, zero.
You? Science Lecture Hall?
Mr. Moderator, we are five in favor, zero opposed, zero abstention.
There being eighty-two in favor, two opposed, and six abstentions. This motion passes by more than the two-thirds required. Article twelve has been withdrawn. Article thirteen is not as presented in the warrant. Okay. Now, as there were some edits made to this, but they were not made in time for the disgruntlement of the town moderator before it was, the warrant went out, I have to read this whole, this whole article. You have, all should have received a copy of it. You can follow along, and let me see if I make any mistakes. Article thirteen, regarding a Select Board public hearing requirement. See if the town will vote to amend Article four of the general bylaws of the town of Burlington to add the following language. 1.14, Residential Housing Process. Before the Select Board can approve, disapprove, send a letter of support, or commit any other action which involves the construction of four or more residential units. Pursuant to MGL Section forty-B, Sections twenty to twenty-three, projects, or other housing laws and regulations, the Select Board shall hold a public hearing. Select Board shall vote on the matter at a subsequent meeting. 1.14.1, Public Hearing. Notice of the public hearing shall be published in local media and on the town website not less than twenty-one days prior to the scheduled date of the hearing, and shall include the date, time, place, and purpose of the hearing and a description of the residential projects under consideration. 1.14.2, Notifications. Details of the housing project provided to the Select Board shall be sent to the town clerk and to all town officers, town meeting moderator, building, planning, and conservation departments, the Housing Partnership, Town Meeting, Land Use and Zoning Bylaw Review Committees, and town public safety agencies as soon as practicable. Notification of the public hearing shall be sent to all abutters and property owners within three hundred feet of the site. 1.14.3, Vote. A vote of the Select Board to approve or disapprove or continue the housing projects shall be taken at a meeting of the Select Board not less than five days subsequent to the public hearing. The vote shall be recorded and filed with the town clerk, submitted by the Land Use Committee. Mr. Pearson, Land Use Committee comments.
Mr. Moderator. In 2019, the Select Board received a proposal for development on Richardson Road, and after reviewing that proposal, the Board passed that proposal favorably to the state of Massachusetts for review as per the process in Section forty-B. This amendment is simply to say that if the Select Board should have a situation like that again, where there is a housing proposal, a proposal for building new housing that comes to them, then they should hold a public hearing before that issue is voted upon and sent to the state. So it is simply a matter of mandating a public hearing. When the Planning Board deals with construction of new housing or other types of residential activities like this, there is always a public hearing, and abutters and other town officials are notified that. And so this amendment basically sets up a process by which the Board of Selectmen would go through the same kind of public hearing process that the Planning Board does. The planning, the wording has been altered and negotiated and changed several times, and that's why you were forced to read the whole thing. The wording has been changed by the General Bylaws Committee to get it just right.
General Bylaw Committee, you have a stance on this article or votes?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The General Bylaw Review Committee voted four, zero to support this amendment, the article, with the amendments that you read.
Thank you. Did Planning Board take a position on this article? Sounds like no. Does the Select Board have a position to express on this article? Mr. Denizio?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Select Board did not have a vote on this article.
All right, then, I guess we'll open it up to questions from the body. Mr. Murphy?
Thanks, Mr. Moderator. Chris Murphy, Precinct Five. So my question, Bill, is why would the Selectmen not have, Select Board not have a position on this? And can we hear from some of them? Because this seems onerous to me, and I'm wondering if they're sitting here thinking this is a total pain in the ass for them and not necessary? Or do they think it's a perfectly good idea? Or what? So I'd like to hear from some of the Selectmen.
Do we have any Selectmen who wish to comment? Excuse me. Any members of the Select Board who wish to comment? Yes, we do. Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I hope everyone can hear me okay. So I had put it forward to have a vote on this. Nobody's seconded the vote. I think the general concern from the la, the first time this was proposed as an article was the time constraints. Obviously, you know, that was town council's concern as well. You know, that we have to operate under such a tight timeline. I think in the, in an effort of transparency, obviously, you know, what this body wishes us to do, we will comply with. You know, but from what I understand, this, what was voted on originally was in support of the proposal, not... Basically, it was the initial cascade of a series of events that would have occurred regardless of our vote. So whether or not there's a public hearing, obviously, everything we do as a board is in the public eye, and we welcome people to participate in those conversations should they want to. So again, whichever way this body wishes to go, we'll, we'll, you know, abide by that. But the time constraints are a little tricky and may make, you know, situations like the one that Mr. Pearson is referring to difficult on the town end to coalesce, I guess. Thank you.
Bill, you're muted if you just said something there.
Yes, I was. Mr. Murphy, any follow-up?
Well, only that I'd love to hear from any of the other Selectmen, but I mean, that was exactly my concern, and I think the time constraint is enough of an inconvenience that this might sound like a nice idea, but I feel like in practice, this is going to be a real pain in the neck for, for not a lot of gain, and that's a very long list of people that are now, you know, have to be notified. This reminds me frankly of people, no offense to all my colleagues, but people that come on to this body and say that, well, we need to get, you know, we're going to need to get more information, we need to get it sooner, and, and to what end? It often doesn't, it just falls on deaf ears, or we never really needed it in the first place. This feels to me like something we, we don't need to impose on the Selectmen, and it's, I'm, I'm not going to support it.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Mr. Eiler?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I like the concept of certainly providing more visibility, and from that point of view, it's good. This, a similar article was proposed and withdrawn from last town meeting because, because of the time constraint. So I, I just wanted to point out my understanding of this as I read it. My understanding is that the Selectmen have thirty days to respond to requests of this sort. If I read the timeline right, it looks like there's twenty-one days of public notice required, and they're only allowed to vote five days after a public hearing, so that's a total of twenty-six days out of thirty. So it appears that this narrows it down to four possible days where the Select Board could meet to vote on the issue. And, you know, obviously, if there's a weekend in there, you could be down to two days. So while I, I like the idea, I'm, I'm wondering if, if I'm doing the math correctly there, and if I am, I guess I would suggest, I might want to consider mending the required public notice to something shorter to allow more time for the Select Board. And if I haven't done the math right, I'd like to hear what's the correct math. Thank you.
Mr. Pearson? Can you handle the math question?
Yes, the math question is, is that the town attorney pointed out that in the forty-B legislation that the Selectmen, the Select Board, is required to provide a response to a developer who submits a forty-B request to them within the space of thirty days. And what this does is this provides for amount of time for the Selectmen to have discussions about this. It allows for members of the Planning Board and every mothers of the community, other members of the community who do with, deal with housing issues. And most importantly of all, it allows for the residents who live in the neighborhood of a proposal to be able to go to their town representatives and talk to them about it without having to pay a lawyer to represent them. The situation is, is that if we do not put together this kind of requirement, then the only time that abutters are allowed to participate in the process is at the very end, when the proposal comes to the Housing Board of Appeals. At that point, it's a antagonistic legal process, and the abutters need to hire a lawyer in order to be able to participate in the process that the Board of Appeals goes through. And that is what is happening with the Richardson Road people. They had to hire a lawyer in January of this year, and they are still paying that lawyer here in September to represent them before the Board of Appeals. And my committee and the bylaw, General Bylaws Committee, believe that if you're going to put a housing development, this is a twenty-eight unit apartment complex that's going to be placed into a residential neighborhood. If you're going to place a twenty-eight unit residential unit into a residential neighborhood, that the, the members of the neighborhood ought to be able to come and talk to their town representatives without having to hire a lawyer. And that the, the least the Board of Selectmen can do is hurry along the process so that there is a possibility that, that the residents have, can have some input on this without resorting to the legal system. And the, you know, the Planning Board has done this kind of stuff on a regular basis. And, you know, if, if the, if the Selectmen believe that they are not able to provide any public input to their decisions about something as important as a twenty-eight unit apartment complex going into a residential neighborhood, I, I think that that's, you know, just, just not excusable. I mean, they have to be able to put together some kind of process for the residents of an area to be able to participate. I mean, that's the least the town government can offer to its citizens is the ability to come and talk to their public officials at a public, open public meeting and have some discussion of the issue before it goes into a court process. I, I just really think that we need to have this kind of public hearing requirement so that we don't put our residents under the gun before they have any chance to have anything to say.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. I'm going to recognize.
May I follow up?
Lisa Mead, you'll get your chance. Hold on.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. For the record, Lisa Mead, Town Council. I just want to clarify a couple of the comments that were made relative to the timeframes. So the Board of Selectmen aren't required to submit their comments. However, if they don't submit comments to the subsidizing agency within thirty days of receipt of an application, the subsidizing agency is not required to consider the Board's comments. So it's essential that if the town and its residents want the subsidizing agency to consider its comments, it must have those to the subsidizing agency within thirty days. One other correction I'd like to make is that the Planning Board and Zoning Board under Chapter forty-eight and Chapter forty-one require a require a fourteen day notice period, not a twenty-one day notice period. So the Board of Selectmen has never said to me that they're concerned about having a public hearing. They're concerned about being able to get their comments into the subsidizing agency so that they are considered. So those are the timeframes that need to be thought about.
Thank you, Ms. Mead. Mr. Murphy, follow up.
I think you meant me, I hope.
Excuse me, Mr. Eiler.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We all look alike. So I
Participant list, you do.
I just wanted to, so I agree with everything Mr. Pearson said. I think it's very reasonable. But again, I believe as written, there's a four day window for the select board to meet the the constraint of the thirty days, which doesn't seem practicable to me. So I guess I would suggest that unless the twenty-one days was shortened to fourteen, this does not seem like a workable strategy to give the select board four days to do a vote when there might be a weekend in there. It's very hard to schedule meetings like that. So I would suggest unless it's changed that we don't agree with this. But if it's changed to fourteen days, I'd be all for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Mr. Glance.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Nolan Glance, Precinct One. I was thinking along the same lines. I think this I think that we need a good process for this. I think it sounds like the intent is to make sure that these types of projects don't go through without being able to have public comment to give to the selectmen for them to give our slash their comments to whomever they need to give them to. And so I think if we need to amend it to make it workable, then let's amend it to make it workable. I understand that they're meeting normally every two weeks and so on. I don't want to have a special meeting, you know, with with the week on the weekend or something like that. If we amend it to fourteen days, does this now work and can we do that?
I'd accept that as a friendly amendment.
So do I hear an amendment to change twenty-one days to fourteen days?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the amendment of making that change. Any comments? I see a number of hands up. Are they just on the amendment or on the article? Just talking the amendment now. Mr. Parsons, you have a question on the amendment? Yes. No. Hands go up and down. All right. Then let's put this amendment to a vote. All right, the poll's gone out. Okay, can I get my breakout room votes? Music theory room.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. We were four in favor, zero abstention, two opposed.
Thank you. Chorus room.
Your votes four zero zero.
Thank you. Science lecture hall.
Mr. Moderator, four in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions.
Sixty-one, four zero. Clean out this here. Seventy-three, five nine. There being seventy-three in favor, five opposed and nine abstentions. The amendment passes. Out. Brings us back to the main motion. Are there questions on this amended motion? Ms. Bix Highland.
Mr. Moderator, Mimi Bix Highland, Precinct One. I wanted to hear from Mr. Pearson if what he thinks about this amendment from twenty-one days to fourteen days, how it impacts the intent of this article as he presented it.
Mr. Pearson.
I believe that this is a workable compromise, and I'm willing to go along with that. I voted in favor of the amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, through you to Lisa Mead. Is it not customary to frequently ask proponents to voluntarily extend the thirty days? Given that the thirty days prejudice is against the abutters, it can be presumed that the proponent is trying to exclude the abutters. And then they should just, the selectmen should just recommend against it. However, if the developer proponent is willing to grant an extension to the thirty days, then it can include the abutters.
Through the moderator, the timeframe governs the subsidizing agency, not the proponent. The proponent has no authority over the timeframe by which to submit comments to the subsidizing agency.
Follow up, please.
Go ahead.
If the proponent is intent upon getting abutters reviews, could they not present an informal presentation to the selectmen and notify abutters prior to submitting the formal thirty day?
They could do that at any time. Yes, that's for sure.
Anything further, Mr. Kelly?
No, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Murphy.
Thanks, Bill. Yeah, quick follow up. So as I read this 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 thing, I mean, it lists basically every single person in any capacity of government, it seems, in the town that needs to be notified as a result of this. Maybe town council could comment on how binding is that? And would an angry abutter be able to dig into this and say, well, wait a minute, you didn't notify all the public safety agencies in town, and so therefore I'm going to get my lawyer to stop all this. Again, it seems like a very onerous list of people that are required to be notified. So I'm just wondering if if that could become a problem.
Ms. Mead, please.
Through the moderator, well, certainly the board is enacting in a adjudicatory manner. They're acting in their capacity to give comments here. It's now they've been directed under the bylaw to notify. So it certainly would give an ability, I suspect, but but only under assert appeal, that is, that the board somehow acted in an arbitrary and capricious manner and failed to notify appropriately under the bylaw, but it's certainly not a statutory requirement.
So.
Mr. Murphy, any follow up?
Well, yeah, so I'm not sure I was clear on that response. So yes or no, somebody could hold up the entire process because one of the thirty-five agencies and people that were listed here were not notified.
Mr. Murphy, I think you know as well as anybody that anybody can appeal or sue anyone for anything. That doesn't mean they'll be successful on it, but certainly adding this bylaw in that manner with those number of notices would add to the ability for somebody to quash a project.
Exactly my point. Thank you. So again, this, I mean, I don't want to keep you know, keep amending this thing. But that seems like a crazy number of people to throw into this that that are required now to be notified in these situations. So anyway, this just seems not necessary to me, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Mr. Glance.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It doesn't say the form of notification required. So I would take that to mean that sending an email with a PDF of some kind of the the details would suffice. And in this day and age, it's pretty darn easy to send a list of email to thirty or fifty or hundred or whatever the right list is. And cats will cannot prepare that, so it's ready to go. I don't see that as being onerous at all.
Thank you, Mr. Glance. Mr. Pearson.
I just agree with Mr. Glance. I don't need to add any more than that.
Mr. Murphy, I still see your hand up. Do you have further questions?
Yeah, I'll put it down, sorry. Well, I mean, this thing ends with and town public safety agencies. It doesn't specify what they are or how many of them. I just felt like this thing was thrown together. And it's it seems a little bit sloppy, frankly, to me. And it just opens itself up to all kinds of scrutiny. And I think it'll cause more headaches maybe than than it's going to solve here. And I will put my hand down after that. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Mr. Pearson, your last comment.
My comment is is that the agencies that are listed there are the agencies that typically become involved in housing projects in this town. That when the planning board is involved in a residential housing project, all of these different agencies not only not only get notices of the planning board meetings, but frequently are involved in having hearings of their own involved. And so I think that rather than saying that this is too many people, this shows you that when the town in the past has done housing proposals, has considered ideas for residential apartments, that a great number of town agencies have been involved, and there are a lot of different considerations in this. And that in contrast to that, if we have only the five selectmen go through the process and decide on whether or not it ought to be sent to the Zoning Board of Appeals and to the state, that it really is missing out on all of the expertise that needs to be brought in in order for a project to be done well. I mean, public safety, you're complaining about the notifying that whether or not the fire department should be asked whether or not it's safe to build the, an apartment complex with the design that these people have? You're saying that the police, public safety shouldn't, police don't have any say in how a residential apartment complex is set up? Those are things that are done standard. There's always kind of comments going on in that. And to say, oh, well, we don't need those people because the Board of Selectmen have to rush through, it just doesn't make any sense.
Bill, can I, can I just?
Mr. Pearson, Mr. Murphy, your hand's still up.
Yes. So, so Monty, I'm not or to Monty through the moderator, I'm I'm not saying any of those things. I'm not saying it's not a good idea.
You said the list was not well considered.
Monty, let me finish.
You said the list was not well considered.
Monty, can I finish? What I said was the list is not specific. For instance, the very, read the last sentence under notifications. And town public safety agencies. It doesn't specify which ones. If I am an abutter opposed to a project and I hire a lawyer, the lawyer is going to read that and say, aha, I wonder if they notified every single thing that I would consider a public safety agency. And then they're going to maybe figure out that you didn't or somebody didn't. And they're going to stop the project. All I'm saying is if we're going to do this, let's do it properly so that we don't get into a legal quagmire because of the way it was written. It's not written, if you were a lawyer, you would rip this to shreds. This is not written the way a lawyer would write it. I'm not saying it's a bad idea. It's a good idea. You know, I'm not trying to say we should jam development projects, forty B projects in town, and not allow the abutters to have their say. Nobody in town would say that, and I'm not saying that. So please read it and realize that I'm talking about how it's worded and that I think will cause ourselves problems. Because if I was a lawyer and I got hired, this is the first stuff I'd rip open to try to to try to put a stop to this, to a project I didn't like. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Mr. Priest.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. You know, through the chair to Monty, you're you're making it sound like the select board is, you know, a bunch of lone gunmen here. You know, the forty B process has the select board make their comments. Support or not support, goes to the state. And the zoning board of appeals acts as if they were the planning board and notifies all the public agencies necessary and required for the process. So, you know, it's not like this process was designed by the state to forego democracy, little d here. You know, and I mean, should this body vote this down, I'm sure that the select board would be in favor of posting a public hearing whenever one of these comes in front of us. Again, this was never, you know, the the board's concern was never around transparency or the right of the public to be notified. You know, our only contention with, again, to my knowledge, was around the 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 timing. And to Mr. Murphy's point, clearly, there's there's some language issues that may also, you know, be a boon to us. Should the should an advantageous person, you know, take advantage of it? So with that being said, you know, I just want everyone to know that, you know, we, the board followed process, the process that's in place. And should we want to advance or improve on that process, we're open to it. No one, no one from the select board is here to, you know, try and shoot this thing in the leg. We want to be transparent. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Ms. Byer.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kathy Byer, Precinct Two. To Mr. Murphy's point, after the in one point fourteen point two on, under notifications, I I can support all of those, but I'm looking at the phrase as soon as practicable, which is not specific, unlike other like the fourteen days. And so what I would like to know, is it possible to table this until the next town meeting so that there is an opportunity to go through and fine tune the language in this? I'm not sure who to ask that question of.
Probably the moderator.
All right, Mr. Moderator, that's my question to you. Thank you.
Yes, there is. It's always possible for someone to make a motion to postpone this article.
If it's possible for someone to do that, I would like to suggest that be done, but I'm going to leave it to somebody else who would agree with that to make the motion. Thank you.
Is there someone who wants to make that motion?
Mr. Bill, I'm even so moved.
I second.
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded. Table this article to postpone it indefinitely. Any comments on postponing it? On this? Mr. Sinessi.
Excuse me?
Adam Sinessi, Precinct One. I feel like there was a comment earlier in this debate that says that referenced people wanting to kick cans down the road and in looking for more information. I think this seems like an attempt to do that. I think we should have this conversation tonight and end it tonight.
Byer.
Excuse me, you misstated what I had said.
Excuse me, you misstated what I had said. I... It wasn't to postpone this indefinitely, it was to postpone this until the next town meeting so that there's an opportunity to refine the language in it and resubmit it in January to town meeting.
Indefinitely allows it to come back in January.
All right. Versus if we voted it down because of language, then it has to wait for two years. Is that correct?
Well, it's a general bylaw. It can come back again, ended.
Okay.
So, right now I have a motion on the floor, postpone. Mr. Kelly.
Mr. Moderator, in line with Mrs. Byer's motion, could we continue to the January town meeting instead of postpone?
It's the same thing, Jack. It's the same result. Proponent can bring it back anytime they wish, whether they're prepared in January or whether they're prepared in May. It's their call. Any further questions on this? Mrs. Byer, your hand is still up. Do you have further to say? Okay. And let's vote on the motion to postpone. Ms. Warfield, if you could send out such a poll. Okay, can I get... Can I get the votes from my breakout rooms? Music Theory Room.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Zero in favor to postpone, zero abstentions, six against postponing.
Chorus Room.
Vote's one, two, and one.
Science Lecture Hall.
Four in favor of postponing, zero against, zero abstention.
There being forty-six in favor of postponing, thirty opposed, and eight abstentions. This motion, this article has been postponed. Brings us on to Article 15. General bylaw housekeeping amendment has been moved and seconded and is as presented in law. Who's speaking on this? Ms. Warfield, are you speaking on this one? Or the conservation? You should let me know who wants to talk.
This is really a housekeeping matter. When you all passed the erosion and sediment control section of Article 14, Section 6, previously there was a numbering error and so this article is to correct the numbering on those sections.
Okay. We have any comments, questions? This article. Being none? There you go, excuse me. Ms. Bix Highland, please.
Mr. Moderator, I meant to raise my hand before Ms. Warfield started speaking. I wanted to know if it would be appropriate to advance a motion to continue this for Wednesday evening since we won't be able to finish anyway tonight.
Who said?
Well, we're already... We already have this up in front of us and let's see if we can finish this one, this last article. If there's... At the moment, there's no one asking a question on it.
Thank you.
So, no one's asking a question. Warfield, if you could send out a poll question?
And if we do the next article, I can explain why we had the numbering problems.
Okay, can I get my breakout room votes? Music Theory Room.
Music Theory, Mr. Moderator, is six in favor, zero saying, zero opposed.
Thank you. Chorus Room.
Chorus Room, vote's four, zero, zero.
Thank you. Science Lecture Hall.
Mr. Moderator, three in favor, zero against, zero abstention.
You. There being sixty-eight in favor, zero opposed, and two abstentions. Article 15 passes.
Motion to adjourn.
I have heard a motion to adjourn. It's not debatable. So, Amy, if you could send out a... One more poll question? Gotta give it them 10 seconds. They can't decide on this one.
That was funny. I know we heard you.
Okay, breakout rooms, how are we voting?
We're voting 12 feet out the door. Six in favor.
All right. Music Theory, Chorus Room, whatever's next.
Chorus Room, four, zero, zero to go home.
And Science Lecture Hall.
The dwindling Science Room is three in favor, zero, zero.
I hate to surprise you all, but the motion to adjourn has passed and we will see you 7:30 on Wednesday.